Okay, we'll let you sit in.
What's your phone number?
Mayor, we need to explain the reason we're like this is because I have to take. I want to get everybody on.
Right. Okay, so just a quick explanation of tonight's format. We'll start the study session. Welcome, everyone. We're putting the students on the side so that when we broadcast it, everyone will be able to see your shining faces. And also hear you. So we have microphones at each station. Are they on?
Yes, they are.
So is mine on? Yeah, okay.
None of you are running for council or for mayor, are you?
All right, so we're here to listen to you guys. So whoever wants to kick it off?
So I'd like to kick it off and we'll start off with introductions. So my name is Adriana Guerra. I'm from Vista Grande High School and this is my third year on the commission and this year I am president. And a little fun fact about me is I have knee surgery in two days.
And she's smiling.
Knee surgery, holy cow. Well, good luck.
Thank you.
My name is Rainelle Alato. I'm a junior at Union. This is my first year in the commission and I'm heavily involved in STEM.
My name's Delaney Dickey. I'm a sophomore at Vista Grande High School. This is also my first year on the commission and a fun fact is tomorrow I have auditions for Steel Magnolias.
What part?
We audition for any of the parts, but I'm really hoping for Dolly Parton's part.
I was hoping for Dolly Parton, too.
My name is Gracie Anla and I'm in eighth grade and I go to Legacy. And this is my first year on the commission and a fun fact is that I also really like theater.
My name is Melanie Nagel. This is my second year on the commission. I'm the treasurer for the commission. I go to Vista Grande High School. I'm a junior and one of my favorite things to do is read.
Hi, my name is Evan Chaparro. I go to Vista Grande High School. I am a junior. This is my second year on the commission and a fun fact, my hair has actually died black.
Looks good on you, Evan. Looks good. Lot of it.
So that is all for our introductions. We have more members, but a lot of them have the flu, so they could not attend. Yeah, I don't want to get sick either. So to kick it off, we're gonna, I'm gonna start talking about our first event, which is our canine run walk. And this is gonna be our second annual. We actually started it last year and we planned it two years ago. And so it's held at the Casa Grande Dog Park on Pinao. And this year it's going to be on May 2nd from 8:00 AM to noon. It's the first Saturday of May. And I went over to animal control and asked them if they would like to have adoptions held so we can have more this year. And they said they will be holding adoptions at this event. And I also asked if we could have vaccinations and they're going to be having vaccinations at a very low cost. So this is a canine event and basically it's gonna be a pledge run around the dog park. And so every lap they go around at the dog park, they receive a stick and they can donate however much money. And all proceeds would go to the Valley Humane Society. And so we'll have raffles, dog wash, treats, and a lot of clubs and we're still contacting vendors.
I'd just like to say that that, that last year was our first year holding that event and it was so much fun. We had an okay show out and all of the dogs seemed to love like the pools that we set out for them, all the treats and toys. And a couple of people did the pledge walk and they seemed to enjoy it as well. And we really hope to expand it this year.
So how, what is the, describe the pledge walk if I was gonna go and try and walk.
So there would be a table right there and we would have like popsicle sticks and then you would sign your name and how much you would like to donate. Let's say 50 cents per lap because it's really small, the dog park. So each lap you do will give you another popsicle stick. And then when you get done, however many popsicle sticks will multiply by whatever you wanted to donate, let's say 50 cents. And if you did four laps, then we would donate $2 to the Valley Humane Society.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, that was a really fun event. And do you have any questions about it?
I have a comment because they did this one on their own. I mean, they got partnerships and they're building them through the next year. So they've done a great, great job building that event.
I remember going by and I think Evan was quite wet when I got there.
I was in charge of the dog wash.
Yeah. So moving on to our next event, we have youth, which Rainelle didn't talk a bit about.
So the youth commission is planning to have an event at the Vista Gym at March 28th at 9:00 to 1:00 o'clock. So this year we'll focus on mental health and have workshops containing information about time management, stress relievers, and organization skills. These would be presented by students from different colleges and some school counselors. We'll be providing lunch and some scholarship opportunities for juniors and seniors. And have our Judge O'Neill speak for the first part and a goodbye for...
By Mayor McFarland. So closing by Mayor McFarland. And we picked Judge O'Neill because we've heard him before, especially at the city hall event or the town hall, Pinao County Town Hall. And we all loved him, his story. So we wanted him to impact other students as he did us. So that's why we chose him as the keynote speaker. And also our goal is to have 150 students because last year we had roughly like 80, I believe. It was around there. So we want more students because also we have an opportunity for them to, for juniors and seniors to have a scholarship. So that's gonna impact their college like finances. So the theme is mental health and college readiness. But last year was really fun and a lot of them liked the Chick-fil-A lunch. So we're gonna have Chick-fil-A again because it's free.
What's the date of that again?
March 28th.
I have a question on that. Do you have any service providers under the mental health umbrella that'll be participating in this at all?
Not that I know of. I'm not, I don't think we do.
The reason I ask is I sit on the board of directors for Horizon Health and Wellness. And I'm sure that'd be something that they would like to, you know, maybe set up a table and have brochures or, you know, kind of hand out information type stuff. If that's a, if that's a possibility, if you would let me know, I'll, I'll communicate that to the organization and see if they can be there.
I think it would be a possibility. I think we can do it for sure.
Great. Maybe a program.
Yeah, a program. Thank you. Yeah, so it's based off mental health and college readiness and we'll probably add that to the schedule. And some of our speakers are our counselors and our past members, Lincoln O'Parra and Gloria Holt. And they'll be talking about college readiness such as freshman 101 and time management, how important it is to the students who attend.
Can I go to that? No.
Well, anyone's welcome. So, and, but yeah, those three are our speakers and we'll have icebreakers too for the students.
What I love about this event is it gets everyone involved, not only your leaders, say presidents and everything of the clubs at the schools, but anyone is welcome. And we're really trying to inspire those people to become leaders as well as prepare them for those positions. And even if they don't decide to become a president or a leader in their society, then we're still preparing them for their own life and how to succeed in like college and stuff like that.
And you guys are gonna have door prizes and stuff again?
I'll get you for sure.
I think you had giveaways and stuff like that. Are you saying I do that?
We'll most likely have giveaways.
Put me down to let me know what you guys are doing.
Is there any more comments on the Youth Leadership Day or any suggestions?
I kind of like the idea on the, on the mental health, in what aspects?
Vista Grande.
Are you looking at with the mental health? You've got the school counselors, is that? And so they'll be speaking to that as that addressing bullying, other issues that students have?
I'm sure they'll be referring to like resources that they can contact because a lot of kids think that they don't have resources or that they're alone. So I'm sure the counselors will definitely tell them that they aren't alone and that they have someone to go to. For such as college a lot. For example, like college, they say, oh, I can't go, like I can't go there. I don't know what to do. And so they'll, they'll definitely, they'll say like how they can get to college or how they aren't alone.
Do you have good advisors at both schools to advise you about getting scholarships and what it takes to get into college or somebody you can work with in the school system?
I believe ours are kind of decent. I guess the, the people that would be the best for that are our guidance counselors. And we're each assigned one based on our last name. And they, this, this year they've done an exceptionally good job compared to the previous years. They've been emailing us like scholarship opportunities as well as summer programs and stuff like that. And I feel like it's really gotten my fellow classmates excited for their future and got them started thinking about it, especially now that we are juniors. And I feel like this Youth Leadership Day, when we bring them closer to like preparing them for that. But I think our schools do, I can't speak for Union, but Vista, they're doing a pretty good job this year.
To toggle on what Evan said, at Vista, they have improved a lot on the counselors. Like I go to my counselor every day and she's constantly writing me recommendations. She's on the bar. She said, oh, how did that scholarship turn out? And they make a remind for us seniors and say, oh, this scholarship's coming out. Make sure you, you sign up for that. Or this college event is going on, we'll try and make transportation for the seniors or juniors to attend. So I agree that, I can't speak upon Union's behalf, but...
Unfortunately, those are some of the areas where cuts occurred over the last 10 years with education. When you've got to start cutting, do you cut math? Do you cut counseling and that? And so I think the counselors doing a really good job. And I'm hoping, there's a lot of talk about beefing up and giving more counselors. The counselors are, from everything I understand, are pretty overloaded of what. And so it sounds to me like hopefully that that's getting, being improved and that, that, that there's more funding for, for counseling.
Well, and I think, and you know, Mary, you're talking about, you know, are they getting the information and you hope that there's funding? But that's where maybe this council can take an active role in maybe meeting with the principal and meeting with the advisors and letting them know where you see some of the gaps. And you know, a lot of times what happens is, you know, these kids are gonna probably be fine because they're the leaders. But there's other kids that just might not know where all those resources are. And they might not be going to their counselor every day, but there's still opportunities for those students. So I know when my kids are in school, I found that a lot, that there's that, you know, maybe top 30, 40 kids that were getting all the scholarships and because people didn't know. So I think it would be good to maybe follow up with the school counselors and, and let them know how they can reach out to some of the other students and where you find gaps are in communication. And, you know, if you see that you're not getting certain information, make sure that they're aware. Because they might think that they're dispersing it to everyone, but they're not getting it all. So...
And I think that's one of our main objectives for Youth Leadership Day is to connect them with their counselors and remind them that they are backed by all of these adults that have had the experience in the past and are willing to help them to achieve what they want.
And you know, Evan, that, along with that, for those that are doing a really good job for you, don't forget to do kudos to them. Because it's important for them to know how much you appreciate what they're doing. And like you said, if it's different now than it was last year, they need to know that you see the difference.
You know, there's a plethora of scholarships that are available that most of you won't know about unless you get some help. Like Lisa had suggested. But I, I know, we were at a meeting where the representative from ASU said, if you really want to go to school here, we'll make sure you graduate. And so, and also I don't know within the county, we would love to see ASU open a college down here or a...
Campus.
Collegiate like they have in other locations. They haven't done it now. But the, and CAC obviously has a pretty good scholarship program for people that want to go there for their first two years.
Yeah, a lot of kids are always saying they love Youth Leadership Day because they get a lot from it. They learn a lot from that event. So that's why the whole commission enjoys doing it because we're helping other students achieve their goals. Another event that we were thinking of doing, but possibly next year, I won't be here, but it's called the banda night. So what we wanted was, because we know a lot of people at our school who love going out to dances and like at La Familia or Catalinas. And we wanted to plan like a live band or like a mariachi. And just in like the dirt, like the desert, like rodeo grounds and have vendors, like have popovers, like tamales, the tacos and stuff like that. So kids can get together and just have fun and just dance. And of course, like we'll have bands for alcohol free. Because I know there's another city event going on at the rodeo grounds. Is there?
You know Larry and I can help you with the rodeo grounds, if, if you're interested in finding out and you have dates and that kind of stuff. Or want to come out and look and see what there is.
Yeah, there's an, I know that there's another city. So we were thinking of maybe tagging along that event. So kids can also attend not only the city event, but they can also go to like the dance floor where like the band is playing. So it's pretty broad. It's still in the planning process, but it was just a good suggestion that we mentioned to a lot of our friends and they would definitely attend.
Saw that in the news.
Yeah.
Called it a rodeo, huh?
Yeah.
Well, and I know Councilmember Herman brought that up the other day when we were in our planning session because we were talking about an event and I know the Blatts are here and brought up the Tamale Fest. And we had some discussion on that for one of the nonprofits in town. And then he mentioned that you guys wanted to do that. So we said, well, we can maybe get the youth commission and the Latino Familia Initiative in the city and possibly work on this tamale festival that is something that someone from the community brought to our attention. So he did bring that up to us. And then you talked about tying in the rodeo. So, so we, I really hope that we can all get together and do something. I think it'd be great.
You know what the chariata is?
No, I don't.
It's a traditional rodeo from Mexico, the way it's done. Very different. They have a number of things that they do. But we'd had one, what, two or three years ago, the chariata that...
Do you remember Larry? Three years ago?
And, and it really went over very well and was, was well attended, so.
Yeah, well, we wanted to be like a good like turnout because a lot of kids, like they say, there's nothing to do. And we want to give them something to do, something safe and something fun for them to remember.
But it's something different and it supports culture.
Now, you guys want to ride bulls or? Not going that far.
But yeah, that was just our process in the planning for that. But our next, another event that we're also doing is the Garden of Sunshine.
So this year we're holding our Garden of Sunshine Memorial on February 28th?
Twenty ninth.
The last Saturday of February. And it is right next to the Palm, the Palm Island Complex. And so basically we try and always improve on the garden every year, add a little something new. And we believe this year we're going to be adding a lot more metal plants. Because I mean, the title is Garden of Sunshine and we feel like we're having a little lack of plants. So we want to really add to the plants. And what we want to do is buy a lot of cactuses and have each of the families plant one. And also just like expand and make it look a lot more like a garden this year. And one of the things we wanted to do was try and contact APS to get us some lights for the garden. Because at night you can't really like tell because it's dark. And we believe it would look a lot better if we had some spotlights to put up.
Are you gonna look for the artwork local or how are you gonna do this?
We've been trying to. I saw that there was a couple at the street fair. I don't know if they're local or not, or not. I have, I didn't get the chance to ask.
There is one local artist that she does a lot. In fact, she does a lot of internet sales also. That, in that, so I can give you that information.
Perfect.
And if APS won't do the lights there, you can always resort to solar lights.
You'd have to put them where somebody would pick up on them.
Also, we're working on the sign.
Put them up high enough.
Possibly put them on the lights that are already there.
And we're also, we've been working a year or so trying to get a sign for the garden. Just like, nothing like too complex, but like a big sign that says Garden of Sunshine. Because we have a small plaque, but when you're like on the road, you're driving down or walking by, you don't really know what it is. And we want people to be able to see what it is clearly. And we've been working with Steve, I believe, to try and get that sign put up. So we hope to get that done.
Yeah, we've been working with Steve to get something that kind of matches the city signs. That looks similar. A little explanation of the garden. So he's been helpful and it's just one of the...
I'd need if you could put a QR or something there that, that goes on to and explains what the garden is about. And then that way people could just go on, scan the QR and then...
That'd be really cool.
Since they did the park.
You high-tech lady.
I love QR's.
We were try, we were trying to get a sponsor from the park renovation contractors to help with the signs. I don't know how that's going, but probably not really good. But we're trying.
Streets Department makes signs too, so.
The what? I'm sorry?
Streets Department, Mr. Kevin Lewis back there. So just some ideas.
And what time was the 29th?
Oh, it's six.
Six.
Yes, six.
Can I have a neon time?
I'm sorry?
What about last year's event, Melanie?
So last year we invited a lot of fam, and we set off balloons. And then we also had the families paint the pillars and put their handprints, which was a good, unique touch that they put, will literally touch, that they put to the garden.
It really brightened it up because the poles at first were just gray concrete. And so we painted them the brightest yellow we could find.
You don't miss them. Yeah, you don't miss them when you go by. They're very bright.
And what we did was we had a few different colors and we had meanings behind the colors. And we had the families choose which color they thought best suited their, their child. And they were able to put the handprints all over the pillars and like write a little message if they, they wanted in it.
Yeah, it was a very emotional event. A lot of the families loved it because they actually got to, like, like Evan said, they actually got to like touch the pillar and actually put their hands in memory of their child. So it was really emotional, especially when they let go of the balloons as well.
It's nice that this is on an annual basis. So, yeah, means a lot.
Anything else?
Um, in December, our commission participated in the electric light parade and that went well. I think everybody had fun. We all, excuse me, we all dressed in costumes from Nightmare Before Christmas. And so that was super fun. Many of our decorations and our masks were handmade. So that was unique from other floats.
We had some very talented costume makers. Found out that day. Found out that day. And we did it all in one day, we.
All in one day?
Yep.
Yeah.
Mister Powell, I yelled for you guys as you went by our booth.
I feel like the costumes really brought like all the spirit to us, cuz we are characters and
Yes.
We're singing along to the songs all day, and it was just a lot of fun trying to recreate the Christmas town. We did a pretty good job, um I definitely can't wait until next year to see what comes out of it, but I had a lot of fun this year.
Looked pretty good when it went by us.
Sure did.
Um another thing we've been working on, uh trying to participate in the general plan process from their point of view. So Paul set aside some time this Saturday, but we're trying with the flu and everything going around to do that, but we're also trying to see if he can get them to come to our meeting, to their meeting next month. So that we'll have the Youth Commission there, and then also they can talk about the general plan. So I know that just started today because of my ineptness sending Paul an email last week, um so, but we're working on that. Another thing we had discussed um briefly was kind of talking with them right now about what they, you know, we're always talking about what they would like to see in the city, what would bring them back here to work, to live, to raise their family, so not to put you on the spot, but I'm going to.
Well, one thing that a lot of kids was, um as someone mentioned, having a college here, I know we have CAC, but maybe like an ASU campus, like that would really help a lot of like students out, just it's close to home, and that way it like, it won't be as expensive as it is as it is going up there, so that's like one of the, a lot of suggestions I've heard, like we should have, it should be like a college town. Like also, it would, it would be good for business too, because then it would attract a lot of young people to the campus. So then they would go out to our downtown area or the promenade and like they would go out to the new businesses.
We agree with you.
Yeah.
Very definitely.
I think that would be good for this town. Um another, just other entertainment buildings, a lot, I know the rec center, everyone loves the rec center, it's like a the hangout place now. And um but yeah, those are some of the suggestions, we've been telling a lot of kids at our school to attend the general plan at one PM. And um a lot of them have said they're interested, but I'm not sure if they can go, because the flu is going around, so there's that.
One thing you might get with the mayor about is is how many good jobs are gonna be available when you guys are looking for a job? All kind of jobs. And and it's amazing, Casagrande has really been landing some good industrial uh uh people in our community that have that have identified and come here, and seems like more keep keep coming, and we like that, but uh he could certainly help you uh identify some of that.
Yeah, I believe that if you guys are able to to get uh like an ASU or U of A campus, one of those colleges down here, one of the biggest things that would have the students that go to that college stay here would be the jobs that they want to fill. Because if the job's not here, then they can't really stay here, even if they wanted to.
Yeah, it used to be Casagrande in your in your rearview mirror when when you were going off to college or something, but it'd be nice to be able to have it here. And and uh you guys might start a petition, seriously. If if you were passing a petition around to the different school systems, uh urging ASU to open up uh a college uh baccalaureate program here in Casagrande.
Had some conversations with them.
Yeah.
With ASU.
Yeah. We know.
Maybe we need to take a couple of the Youth Commission members with us when we have those conversations.
Maybe invite them down here.
Or invite them down here.
Invite them down here.
I have.
Like John Giles just invited Crow.
She had a huge number of student names from the from the high schools that and presented that, that would really make an impression.
And I know a lot of students would take advantage of it, because like um both high schools really good advantage of the Cabot program. And all they have to offer, even since it is like a commute and you do have to wake up extremely early in the morning compared to normal. Even with those circumstances, a lot of people still take up that opportunity.
I have a question, so we're talking about, you know, out at CAC and that, and if we had an ASU campus and that, that all requires transportation. What's, what do you see as the biggest challenge of transportation for uh juniors, seniors, um freshmen in college and that? What's your transportation?
I know that when I was at U of A, they had an insane amount of public transport, that you never had to worry about finding a a ride with someone, because you always had the free um university transportation, and I feel like if we had that, then uh it would be a lot more accessible, especially to students that don't have their license, can't drive or afford to have a car or anything, any of that.
And was that like a small bus?
Yeah, it was called the Catran, and it's seated like twenty people, and it was just constantly running for the day. And then it would shut down at certain times, so you just kind of planned when you, when you needed to go and stuff.
And so it was pretty much dedicated to the student?
Yes, to the student population.
I know, when I was at U of A, I had my bicycle, but.
And I know like a lot of students too ride their bikes, so when I go up in the like valley or to, I forget where, I think maybe Tempe area. But um it's like the bike lane is green, and it's really bike friendly, like there's a lot of bike trails.
Green, the bike lanes green, Evan.
Kevin, we didn't even bring that up, man.
Nope, she she said it all by herself.
Yeah, but it's like really bike friendly, and like at the park, it's like wide and it's just good views, and I I loved it there, it was so nice, but that's a lot what they use over there too.
And I do know that it would be quite a, quite a trip from Casagrande out to CAC if we had a campus out there and 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 that. But again, I think the idea, I hadn't thought about is a dedicated transportation system that uh that they call that the lost mile or whatever, that wouldn't have that, where the transportation was dedicated to picking up, dropping off certain times, and then stopping, and then picking up, dropping off, and stopping again, it's not a constant. Because that's, that's what I see as one of the biggest challenges for a lot of students.
And it was always reliable, because they use technology, so you can get an app on your phone, and it will tell you accurate times, how you stop and everything like that. So it's always reliable.
Might be something we should go down and investigate.
Yeah, those are all our suggestions and all our events, is there any more comments?
Anybody?
I would like you guys um to tell them about the dance, that that was a pretty neat event, and tell them where, how many people, everything.
So we hosted our first annual Halloween night dance, and it was just an option that the commission came up with, because on Halloween, sometimes they don't wanna go trick or treating, but sometimes it's like kids or teenagers go partying. So we don't want them to get into any trouble or get hurt or anything, so we hosted the Halloween dance at the rec center, at the new rec center. And so we had a pretty good turnout for being the first year, it was like about how many kids, like fifty, sixty? So it wasn't too bad, and we had like a bunch of snacks, and we, we were our own personal DJs, Nena. She was in charge of the DJ, and everyone had their costumes, and uh we had a costume contest, like.
We had pumpkin painting, uh apple bombing, and we had a bunch of contests, and we had like um uh Starbucks gift cards to give out to the winners and everything like that, and they really enjoyed like the competition as well as like the dancing.
Do you get sponsors for that, or is that something you look at as the time goes on, to do donate those cards and it's?
Yeah, it was kind of a, I won't say la- it was kind of a last minute idea, I mean, but they put it together like a month, you know, they're like, well, at this age, we're not, you know, we don't, there's not a lot to do, they don't wanna go trick or treating so much maybe, but they still wanna eat some candy and have some fun, but not be out somewhere doing bad things, right? So it was a great opportunity, and you could see it down the street uh at the rec center, it was really, they did a great job, that's why I wanted to bring it up, and use the rec center, and we had a good uh partnership with the Boys and Girls Club as well, they helped with the staffing of the event. They also went through, they got the uh participants to sign like a little waiver thing, saying, hey, we're, you can come here with us, but if you leave, we're not responsible for what may happen after that, and it it turned out really great.
Yeah, it was really good, a lot of them, it was free, so that way, free food, free drinks, candy. And so when they walked in, we gave them a little go in the dark like wristband, that way like we knew like they entered, they already signed the waiver, and there's two things for them to sign, one was a waiver and one was just um a sign in, because it was only middle school and high school students, and they had to have their ID to go in, that way we know they're a student. Or even homeschool, then they would put homeschool, and a lot of them had a lot of fun, so it was a good event, we'll probably do next year.
And I'm almost positive that it'll grow next year, because after um explaining the event to a bunch of my friends and stuff, they were like, oh my gosh, I'm I'm so gonna go next year, I didn't know like it was gonna be that big of an event kind of thing, and they were like, that sounds awesome, and just advertising, I think we can work on next year, like getting it in the paper and everything more, and really pushing it. And I think a lot more people are gonna show up.
That's a great idea.
Well, it's bringing the schools together too, all the different schools.
It is nice doing that.
Where at the, in the rec center did you guys have it, in the room or gym or?
In that like main room with.
Community room.
Okay.
And they had the the patio open outside, it was.
Oh, that's right, wow, we've got that, ooh.
And they couldn't, they couldn't go on the grass, so we put caution tape, cuz it was like Halloween themed, so it was pretty cool, all the lights and everything.
Did you have Freddy Krueger out there going, don't come on?
Yeah, it was a good experience, it was really fun.
And we have some younger members this year too, so we're pretty excited about that.
What grade level do they go down to in your organization?
For the commission, usually it's seventh, eighth, seventh is the minimum. But this year, we have an eighth grader, so we're happy for that, because she'll stick with us till senior year.
Right?
Mayor, I just have one question to to those that are seniors, I think we have, how many of you, one, is it just one here? So from your experience, what are you gonna walk away the Youth Commission with? I mean, what's the one thing that you can say being involved has has helped you or taught you?
Honestly, it helped me like passions, what I wanna do, and like how much I can make an impact, so just starting a simple event, how much it can impact others and like give them good memories and experiences, and just like remembering that what you left, it can continue on for like years. And knowing that you're the one who started that, because I know our advisor, they said, oh, I remember when I was on the commission. I, we mentioned the rec center, and now it's, we have a rec center, so just knowing that I left that impact, along with um building my network skills and just making new friends, that's what I'll leave with.
Do you realize your leadership talents? You are blessed.
And you know, you made an important point when you said your advisor, and Crystal and Kendra and Jeff and Matt, you guys do an amazing job, I I know a little bit about what it takes, and you guys are very appreciated, because we couldn't do it without the adults, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and I just wanna thank all of you, all the commission actually, uh those who are not here as well, but um you know, it's important, it's important that you get involved, and I think you guys have shown your leadership in that area. Uh cuz if you wanna make a change, you wanna make a positive change on your community, then you have to get involved. So I commend you all for that, and and thank you for for your work that you do towards that, and the advisors as well. Uh cuz without them, obviously, it would be a lot more difficult to to accomplish what you accomplished, so.
Mayor, what grade are you in school, are each of you?
I'm sorry?
They said, they said when they introduced themselves, but it was senior to eighth grade, I think, so we've got the, probably, probably the whole gamut.
And you know, Donna and and Matt, you could probably.
What age group are you in?
I'm a junior.
He's a junior.
Okay.
You could probably tell me, were we not one of the first cities to have?
I have to defer, because I, of course, you have to say, Donna McBride helped, helped to start, start the commission a few years ago.
Yeah, I think we're one of the first, or may have been one down in the sou- southern part of the state. Um we were the first youth commission to recommend to the League of Cities and Towns, to have a youth program at the League of Cities and Towns Conference. And it was because of this group that that program has grown to several hundred students now, and it was their belief that they needed to be represented at the state level, so.
And so you bring to our re- you add to our reputation, I guess, as we're doing that. As being a community that's open to young people, that wanna listen to young people, that that it's important to us. And so you got a lot of.
And you know, and I just wanna say, a perfect example, you know, Kendra is here as one of the advisors, and I remember um when she was, you know, just a little sophomore, when she came to the commission uh and watched her grow, and now that she's done and she's teaching, you know, she's gone into that field, she now has a family of her own, and she has come back to give back to the community, that's what this is all about, and so all of these, you know, these folks that are here, they will be, you know, leading in some way in our city, and that's what, that's what it should be doing, so come take our jobs, you know, just educate and come back, so.
We'll get a better paying job, though.
And our our two advisors, uh Crystal's not here, she's probably babysitting, but both of our volunteer advisors are both teachers. One in high school, one in elementary school district, and they both had children last year, and they did not give up, thank you.
And Matt didn't give up, doesn't care about it.
But they're both teachers, they keep us all together, and they they do a great job of planning everything, I'm just there for looks and, you know. That, I have to give the dad speech every year, right, they say about representing the city and whatnot. And Jeff from uh from the Community Services Department, he's our liaison, helps us get organized with the different activities and everything, so thanks, Jeff, and he's here tonight, we're happy.
Keep up the good work.
And Carl Montoya, of course. Yep, he's still, he he helps out a lot, uh huh, yep. He helps a lot, so.
Any other comments, questions? Okay.
Thank you.